Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed. I'm the City Council President. You can watch the City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I'd like to ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence your cellphones, electronic devices. Thank you. I'd also like to ask everyone to be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave, and if you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note that according to City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ask to attend the presence of a quorum, please? Counselor Arroyo.
President.
Counselor Baker. Counselor Bock. Counselor Bock. Counselor Braden. Counselor Coletta. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah.
Counselor Flynn. Yeah. Counselor Lara.
Here.
Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
And Counselor Orell.
Here.
A quorum is present. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. This week's clergy is Father Joseph from the Basilica on Mission Hill invited by City Counselor Bock. City Counselor Bock, would you like to come to the podium and introduce our clergy for today, please?
Thank you, President Flynn, and I'm delighted today to have Father Tizio with us from the Basilica in Mission Hill. I think many folks know that Mission Hill is named for that Basilica and really specifically for the mission of the Redemptorist Order, which Father Tizio is part of, that goes all the way back to 1732 to serve the poor and most abandoned, and has been at that site where the famous two spires of the Basilica in Mission Hill are since the church was built in the 1870s. So it means a lot to me to have the Basilica of Our Lady of Perpetual Help in my district because it was originally built by German immigrants in the community, and today it remains an immigrant church. I've been there as a counselor for services in English, Spanish, and Haitian Creole, and it's really just a remarkable religious community, serving so many. Father Tizio, who's with us, was ordained to the priesthood in 1975, and as I said, he's a member of the Redemptorist Order, which again serves the poor and most abandoned. And he previously served in parishes in New York City, Philadelphia, and Saratoga Springs, New York, and he's been serving as the lead pastor at the Basilica for the past eight years. So we're really grateful to have Father Tizio with us today, and Father, thank you for joining us.
And thank you for the invitation. I really appreciate it. For the invocation, I'd like to say what's known as the prayer of Solomon. After the death of King David, his son Solomon took over the throne. He was very young, and one day God appeared to Solomon and said, "Solomon asks me for anything you want, and it's yours." And Solomon shocked God, blew God away because he asked for wisdom, and this is the prayer that Solomon made to God, and it's the prayer I'm going to offer up for all of you today. This is a prayer for anyone who has to make decisions that affect the lives of others and serious decisions need to be made that affect the lives of all of us, and so I lift up this prayer for wisdom for all of you. "God of my ancestors, Lord of mercy, you have made all things by your word, and in your wisdom have established human beings to rule creatures produced by you, to govern the world in holiness and justice, and to render judgment integrity of heart. Give me wisdom, the attendant at your throne, and reject me not from among your children; for I am your servant, the child of your handmaid, a person weak and short-lived, lacking in comprehension of judgment and of laws. Indeed, though one be perfect among the children of this world, if wisdom who comes from you is not with them, they shall be held in no esteem. Now with you is wisdom. Who knows your works? Who was present when you made the world? Who understands what is pleasing in your eyes, what is conformable with your commands? Send her forth from your holy heaven and from your glorious throne dispatcher, that she may be with me and work with me, that I may know what is your pleasure; for she knows and understands all things, and will guide me discreetly by her affairs and safeguard me by her glory." And I will add to Solomon's prayer my own prayer for you. May God give each of you true wisdom, the wisdom to be compassionate, the wisdom to stand for justice, and the wisdom to stand for the forgotten and for the marginalized. Amen.
Could everybody please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the tribe of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alex, what was that? Mr. Clerk, could we ensure the record is reflected that Counselor Coletta is present? We do have several presentations, and first I want to say thank you to Father for those inspiring words. Our Lady of Perpetual Help plays an incredible role in our city, and when my grandfather had tuberculosis, that's where a lot of the Irish families would go and pray for the sick, so that's a special meeting for all of our immigrant communities. So thank you, Counselor Bock, and thank you, Father. The special presentations we have today, and at this time, I would like to invite Mayor Michelle Wu to join me at the podium. So it's an honor to welcome once again the mayor of the city to the Boston City Council, and please know that we're very proud of you, Mayor, and the work you are doing and your team as well. At this time, we would like to recognize the Municipal Protective Service offices and the Boston Police Offices, whose professionalism and training have helped save a gentleman's life. This gentleman suffered a heart attack in the lobby. And these offices that are over here on the left perform CPR and AED and quickly transported him to an ambulance. Their reaction saved a life. It is a testament to the important work that our Municipal Protective Service offices and the Boston Police Offices are doing every day across the city. We would like to recognize these offices, and I'm going to name them, and then I'm going to give an opportunity for Mayor Wu to speak as well. From the Municipal Protective Service, Officer Martha Cagna, Sergeant Ryan Geary, Sergeant John Samuel, Officer Rudy Moran, Officer Marie Frenzos, Officer Lopez, Officer Kevin Coughlin, and the Director Steve Tankle, and from the Boston Police Department, Sergeant Chevers, Officer Bruce Kwong, Sergeant Richard Fitzpatrick. And at this time, I would like to again welcome the mayor to the City Council and ask the mayor to present these citations and to recognize the heroic work that these officers played in saving a life. Mayor Wu?
Thank you, Mr. President, and hello, everyone. Don't worry, I'm not here to lurk for the entirety of the meeting. I know you have some very important votes today to take, but just wanted to thank the council president for really ensuring that we could have a chance to recognize the bravery and selflessness and incredibly hard work that goes into keeping City Hall secure and welcoming for everyone. As mentioned, just in the general, the everyday routine of watching our city residents and visitors come to do business in City Hall, a gentleman collapsed, and this entire team got to work. Everyone took turn, giving the chest compressions, worked for some terrifying number of minutes to make sure that this constituent had every possible chance at life before our first responders and EMTs could make it here. I am told that they kept at it and kept at it, and moments, you know, just as the EMTs were arriving, moments before the constituent was about to be transported to the hospital, he actually opened his eyes again. And so you all saved his life yesterday. We are so thankful for your quick thinking and your training and your professionalism, but we know that you do a whole lot more than even to save lives from time to time when it's very badly needed every day. You are the face of welcoming people to this building that is the public property of our residents, and I've had the pleasure and the honor of getting to see your smiles as we come in every day. So thank you so much for all that you do, and thank you for your service. So we have a certificate of recognition for each of these incredible leaders. They also have a certificate of recognition from the city of Boston in honor of your leadership, heroism, and bravery during an immediate emergency at City Hall. On behalf of the city of Boston, we thank you for ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents. So we'll make sure these get to each one of you all, and maybe if Counselors want to come on?
My colleagues, come on up, guys. You can move up, so you can...
Sergeant Chevers. People can come up, too. Come up closer.
Can you get closer, guys? We like you.
First, I want to thank the mayor, the City Council, for recognizing the work of MPS. The situation that happened yesterday just came upon us like a lot of others, and the offices behind me stepped up and did the right thing. Through training and knowing what to do, we were able to save this gentleman's life, and for that, I will always be truly grateful. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, can the record be reflected that Counselor Baker is present? Thank you to Mayor Wu. Thank you to the Municipal Protective Service. Thank you to the Boston Police for being here with us and for the important work that you do in this building and across the city as well. We have a second presentation. At this time, I would like to ask City Councilor Brian Orell to please come to the podium and introduce the Tech Boston Girls Basketball Championship Team.
It is a pleasure to have some of some young people here today who I'm a fan of, and over some pizza. I was able to have more conversation with them and became more of a fan once I heard them start singing some Justin Bieber. And I know they have a lot of fans throughout the city of Boston. I've watched your games, read about you guys in the newspaper, and cheered you on. And our student athletes, they go above and beyond to compete on and off the court. I was a student athlete, but never at a championship level, but I know it's late days, it's weekends, and it's aches and pains, and it's also a grind. So it's always a true honor to be able to recognize and celebrate our young people, especially here in City Hall. I also want to give a shout out to all the parents and the coaches that make it happen for our student athletes. It's driving the practices, it's organizing, and it just speaks to it truly taking a village to making this happen. But coming off a regular season record of 17-5, the Tech Boston Bears clinched their first City League title with a 66-52 win over New Mission, with Tournament MVP Giovanna Kostin scoring 29 points alone. With a focus on fundamentals, teamwork, and self-confidence, and I'm hearing that it shouldn't be coached, but it's Dr. Malcolm Andrews, has grown a team over the last eight years. Just also want to give a shout out to all the seniors here. We have Destiny, sorry if I get the last name wrong, Orago, Jasmine Williams-Santiago, Kenesha Delva, Sonia Luzon, Tula Curley, and Empress Nordis. You might have heard me say before that I have the honor of representing the best district in the city of Boston, but Tech Boston Bears have proven it on the basketball court. So today, appropriately on International Women's Day, we welcome the city champion, the Tech Boston Bears.
Could I ask my colleagues to please join us for a picture? Yeah, and Coach, come on up here, and could the rest of the team please come up to the podium as well? And the coach wants... Coach, can you say a few words?
I'll say a few words, sir. Sorry, I didn't know I was going to get a chance to say anything. So first and foremost, thank you for having us, but more important than that, thank you for supporting us. I actually want to... I'm looking for the mayor because I know she was here a second ago, but I want to thank her because many of you may know Tech Boston has had some things in the past, and last year, she's been supporting us and has continued to support us and support these students to do what they do best, which is be, you know, academics and athletics. So I'm just very grateful to have an amazing group of girls and an amazing support network in the city of Boston, and so we're happy to make you all proud because we're proud to be here.
Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Counselor Orell, for that presentation, and congratulations to this wonderful basketball team as well. Mr. Clerk, could we have the record reflected that City Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson We're on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Reports of public officers and others... Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0508-20515, please.
Docket number 0508. Notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Shawna Gillis-Smith as a member of the Boston Civic Design Commission. Notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Catherine Morris as a member of the Boston Civic Design Commission. Docket number 0510. Notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Lindsay Eastley as a member of the Boston Civic Design Commission. Docket number 0511. Notice was received from the mayor of the reappointment of Mimi Love as a member of the Boston Civic Design Commission. Docket number 0512. Notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Laura Solano as a member of the Boston Civic Design Commission. Docket number 0513. Notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Nick Long as a member of the Boston Conservation Commission. Docket number 0514. Notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor upon papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting on February 8, 2023. And docket number 0515. Notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 relative to action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting on February 50, 2023.
Thank you. These dockets, 0508-20515, will be placed on file. Reports of committees, Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0323.
Docket number 0323. The Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on February 1, 2023. Docket number 0323. Message in order for your approval, a proposed act to improve and modernize planning and community development in the city of Boston submits a report recommending that the home rule petition ought to pass in a new draft.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please let the record be reflected? Counselor Flaherty is present. At this time, the chair recognizes Counselor Arroyo, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counselor Arroyo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on February 27, 2023, and a working session on March 3, 2023. On docket 0323, message in order for your approval of a proposed act to improve and modernize planning and community development in the city of Boston, which was sponsored by Mayor Wu.
Yes.
I'd like to thank my council colleagues for attending, Council President Flynn, Counselor Bock, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Baker, Counselor Coletta, Counselor Braden, and Counselor Flaherty. I would also like to thank members of the administration for participating in both the hearing and the working session. Arthur Jemison, Chief of Planning and the Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency; Lisa Harrington, General Counsel for the Boston Planning and Development Agency; and Devin Quirk, Deputy Chief for Development and Transportation for the Boston Planning and Development Agency. This home rule petition, as filed, formally abolishes the Boston Redevelopment Authority, or the BRA, and the Economic Development Industrial Corporation, or EDIC, of Boston. This act transfers the powers and duties of those entities to an agency newly created by this act, which formally and formally adopts this agency as the Boston Planning and Development Agency, or the BPDA. This act also ends the period of urban renewal and narrows the scope of the newly formed BPDA to focus on three key planning principles, specifically resilience, affordability, and equity. During both the hearing and the working session, we discussed concerns and questions within this home rule petition. It was explained that the home rule petition before us is legislation that will clean up residual legal items in state law that authorize the formation of the city's redevelopment authority and urban renewal to better reflect the operational realities of the currently existing BPDA. This legislation will simplify operational realities of the currently existing BPDA. This legislation... Sorry. This legislation will simplify Boston's quasi-governmental redevelopment entity by abolishing the BRA and the EDIC and transferring the powers and duties of those entities into a new singular entity named the BPDA, or the Boston Planning and Development Agency. The act also formally ends the urban renewal mission of eradicating blight and urban decay and rededicates planning efforts to further resiliency, affordability, and equity, or RAE, as the city moves into the future, which will allow the city to retain its powers with regards to enforcing planning and development efforts under those themes for the public good. It was explained to us during the hearing and working session that the complete abolition or reformation of the BPDA, or the Boston Planning and Development Agency, would involve multiple steps. Those steps would include ongoing management efforts within the agency to improve the zoning code in Article 80, and they would include a series of proposals that will result in the transition of current BPDA staff to the city. The aforementioned steps and proposals are not within the framework of this home rule petition and are not impacted by the passage of this act before us today. Following the hearing and the working session, the following change is proposed to docket 0323. The amendment addresses concerns about the enforcement of LDAs, or limited disposition agreements, in perpetuity by adding a specific end date consistent with the ultimate end date of the majority of existing covenants. Section 12, subsection C, is amended by adding the phrase "through December 31, 2060." This is the singular amendment to the document before you. As Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, I recommend that this docket ought to pass in its new draft. Thank you to my colleagues for your participation, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Arroyo. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Please note that we have several other important matters to discuss today, so I will ask my colleagues to be brief as possible, but I do want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak as well. The chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor. The chair, rise to offer a friendly amendment to docket 0408, which everyone should have a copy on their desk, and if the clerk would be so kind as to through the chair, read it into the record.
We're not on that docket.
What's that?
This is 032.
So I withdraw my request to make a friendly amendment at this time till that docket. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. The chair recognizes Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just wanted to stand to say that I'm excited to vote in support of passing this home rule petition today. I think that this is ultimately the first step in a really long process to make sure that we are restoring the powers of the city of Boston, but also of our constituents when it comes to planning and development in the city, and I'm really grateful for the administration to moving this forward. In our conversations, Mayor Wu and the BPDA really are committed to ensuring that this home rule petition maintains the current city council powers and by extension, our constituents' powers over eminent domain and all of the other real estate powers that the city council has when it comes to making decisions about development. And so I really think that this home rule petition is the way to get to where we're trying to go, and I just wanted to stand in support of it today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselora. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counselor Louis Jean. Counselor Louis Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I'll be brief. I think this is the timely moment for us to be looking at the BPDA and to think about how we put planning before development and how we really center community voice. I'm excited about this, in part because we all know the history of urban renewal, and we also know that it really, using the legal powers of calling things as blight, really ruined a lot of our communities. ruined a lot of our communities, like the West End, like tournaments in the South End. James Baldwin coined urban renewal "negro removal." But here, with empowering the BPDA to use urban renewal for equity, resiliency, and affordability in development and planning, I'm excited that we will actually begin to center community voice. There are a lot of issues that folks have highlighted and brought to my office with respect to the need for more civic association voices as part of the Article 80 process, which we are also streamlining, which is a different process. This process here is really focusing on the renewed powers that we're going to allow and the reasons we'll allow the use of urban renewal. So I'm excited to continue on this work. I know this is just the first step, but I just want to let folks in the community know that we hear them, and we are listening, and we are going to make sure that civic associations are part of this process. I also want to shout out the employees who are going to be affected, and I know that there are other councilors who highlighted this as well, but let's make sure that we're thinking about the employees. We're going to have to move over from BPDA and EDIC over to the city, that we are thoughtful about the pension implications and making sure that we get payroll rights. So I'm excited about this and for moving the city forward and putting planning before development, and hope that we can bring the whole city together with us as we have these discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Louie Jen. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter?
I will speak briefly, and I think we need to have a dialogue with residents across the city about how this change will impact development in communities, in various neighborhoods across Boston. That's an important part of this process, is making sure residents know exactly what is taking place, what not is taking place, and what the community involvement, community participation will be. I think residents felt that they were not heard as we discussed this. I received a lot of calls recently about this, so wanted to echo that point. And also, employees of EDIC are asking about how this impacts them and their retirement. I think those are important questions. We still have a lot of work to do on that issue in making sure that employees at the BPDA, EDIC are treated fairly during this process.
Councilor Royo seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0323 in a new draft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote on document number 0323. Councilor Royo.
Yes.
Councilor Royo, yes. Councilor Baker?
Nay.
Councilor Baker, nay. Councilor Bach?
Aye.
Councilor Bach, aye. Councilor Braden?
Aye.
Councilor Braden, aye. Councilor Coletta?
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty, yes. Councilor Flynn?
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Lara?
Yes.
Councilor Lara, yes. Councilor Louie Jen?
Yes.
Councilor Louie Jen, yes. Council Mehea?
Yes.
Council Mehea, yes. Council Murphy?
No.
Council Murphy, no. Council Worell?
Yes.
Council Worell, yes. Document number 0323 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This docket has passed matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0159, please.
Document number 0159, order for a hearing regarding a review of COVID-19 recovery funds.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Bach, the Chair of the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery. Councilor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And we had a productive hearing with BPS on Monday morning. Thank you to my colleagues, Councilor Murphy, Councilor Braden, and Councilor Louie Jen, and yourself, Mr. President, for joining, and Councilor Baker, sorry, I should have added my list. This was really focused primarily on the school department's ESER funds, the sort of piece of the American Rescue Plan funding that went directly to BPS, which is about, it's a bit less than half a billion dollars worth of money. And we're sort of getting a sense of how it's being spent, how much of it has been spent, and what the school department's plan is for making sure that these resources both go to critical recovery for our students and also that we then have a sustainable base for the BPS budget going forward, because it represents a huge surge in spending. And so, and as folks know, the BPS budget comes from the overall city budget. It's at about 40% of the overall city budget these days, and so the question of kind of how to have that ramp up be effective and then how to ramp down from it in a way that really has enduring positive effects for students and doesn't destabilize schools was a big focus of the hearing. I would say we've definitely got some follow-up information requests from BPS. One of them is just that we didn't have the most updated snapshot on ESER. It was back to October, and so I've stressed the fact that we need it really for right now. I think also that the hearing opened conversations that we'll be having throughout the spring about kind of how the hold harmless funds and the fact that shifting some of them to ESER is sort of making it clear how many of our schools are on a unsustainable fiscal basis. That's going to be a really hard conversation for the upcoming budget process. But I think for us, we got a much better understanding. I would encourage councilors to look at the department's presentation that was sent over if you didn't get a chance to go to the hearing. It's definitely something that the committee is going to continue to follow up with BPS on, both in terms of hearings and in terms of information requests, because it's got obviously an enormous city impact. And even though this body isn't the school committee, we're deeply concerned with how these funds are used and making sure that every dime of them also gets spent before the spending deadlines. So I'd ask Mr. Chair that the docket remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bach. This docket, 0159, will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0260, please.
Document number 0260, order for a hearing to address the loss of rehearsal spaces for musicians in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta, the Chair of the Committee on Arts, Culture, Special Events. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The committee held a hearing yesterday on docket 0260, in order for a hearing to address the loss of rehearsal spaces for musicians in the city of Boston. I'd like to thank my co-sponsors, Councilor Liz Burden and Councilor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson, for their attendance, as well as yourself, President Flynn, and Councilor Murphy for being there, and as well as a letter of absence from Councilor-at-Large Louie Jen. Participants from the administration included Chief of Arts and Culture Cara Elliott Ortega, as well as Director of Cultural Planning Melissa Meyer. In addition, we heard directly from dozens of artists and advocates, including members of the Art Stays Here Coalition, tenants of both the Sound Museum and Charlestown Rehearsal Studios, Emily Raduck, who is the Executive Director at Mass Creative, and Dr. Whitlow Sangupta, who is the Director of Arts and Culture from the Massachusetts Area Planning Council. Chief Elliott Ortega provided a presentation outlining the administration's goals around cultural planning, as well as policy and action proposals to counter arts displacement in Boston. There is a clear understanding that protecting these rehearsal spaces is vital in maintaining and growing the creative economy in the city of Boston. There's a welcome push to have a citywide holistic approach to plan for the inclusion of artists in new development. The artists called for it, and it was confirmed by the chief, that there will be a commitment to embed the policy position of no net loss of cultural spaces, as well as integrating the arts into planning and zoning processes, and valuing and maintaining all of the city's existing cultural assets. Some proposed policies to keep our artists in place included more predictable community benefit and mitigation expectations for development projects impacting arts and culture uses, city acquisition of space and land for arts and culture uses as well, neighborhood and citywide zoning reform to enable more cultural uses, arts and culture representation on IAGs or equivalent review bodies. And I did appreciate the fact that they came to the conversation with tangible action steps and things that they are doing behind the scenes, which include establishing a citywide funding mechanism for more cultural space and projects, expanding the capital budget for MoAC to support space projects, establishing city-specific grant funding for existing cultural spaces, and establishing a cultural planning team. They also outlined a few promises, which include, or, excuse me, pieces of news, which included the hiring of two FTEs to expand the cultural planning team, to assist them in this work, and a much-welcome partnership with MAPC for a cross-municipal cultural infrastructure planning network in partnership with Somerville and Cambridge. So there's a lot of work that is being done. I am recommending that this docket stay in committee and that we have a working session with participation of the Boston Planning and Development Agency to talk about how to better integrate MoAC into the Article 80 process, as well as the Office of Budget Management, as the recommendation came from my colleague, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta. This docket, 0260, will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0415, please?
Document number 0415, order for a hearing for the possible closing of several Boston Public Schools and BCYF Community Centers this summer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, we had a very productive hearing on this matter. The lead sponsors were Councilor Flynn and Councilor Baker to discuss the possible closing or the temporary closing of several Boston Public Schools and BCYF Community Centers this summer. These closures are to undertake some necessary upgrades in plant and equipment in these facilities, mainly, especially in the space of HVAC improvements. HVAC improvements are much more disruptive, and it's not possible to have young children and young people in the building while this work is happening. Other lower-grade upgrades are able to be done on school after hours and on weekends during the school year. The HVAC, this is funded by a New Boston Trust, funds for upgrading school facilities, and it's very important work that needs to be done. We had, the administration officials who were in attendance were Commissioner Marty Rivera from Boston BCYF, Brian Ford, Director of BPS Facilities, Kerry Griffin, Director of Public Facilities Department, Adam Mullin from the Public Facilities Department, and Morgan McDaniel, Deputy Chief of Operations from Public Facilities. We had a very productive conversation. We got an understanding of what work was being undertaken and why it was necessary to close the buildings, and how summer camps would be managed and supported while these necessary repairs and upgrades were happening over the summer. It seems that some of these projects are more extensive and will actually require closure again next summer. So I've asked for a list of community centers and schools that are in the pipeline for these improvements, so that all of our district and our council colleagues can see what work is in the pipeline. And I also recommend that this docket should remain in committee, because we want to keep an eye on progress on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. The Chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. As the lead sponsor, I want to thank Frank Baker, my colleague, for filing this, and also to Kerry Griffin and her team from PFD, and also Mata Rivera from BCYF. The conversation, like Councilor Braden said, it was a good conversation, and I want to thank them for their commitment to keeping that communication open, making sure that we're seeing it all the way through the opening of camp through the summer, that our families and our students, despite the need, which is very important that we keep these upgrades happening at our schools across the city, and summer is the time that we can do most of our work on these facilities, but that we're making sure that the families and students or children are least impacted by any of these interruptions. So thank you for keeping it in committee, and also thank you to the administration for their commitment to keep us involved. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Murphy. This docket, 0415, will remain in committee. We're on to docket 0408. Could you please read that, Mr. Clerk?
Document number 0408. Message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the General Court relative to a special law authorizing the city of Boston to implement rent stabilization and tenant eviction protections.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Royo, the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Councilor Royo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. The Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on February 22, 2023, and a listening session on March 2, 2023, and a working session on March 6, 2023, on docket 0408, message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the General Court regarding a special law authorizing the city of Boston's implement rent stabilization and tenant eviction protections, which was sponsored by Mayor Wu. I would like to thank my council colleagues for attending: Council President Flynn, Council Worell, Councilor Bach, Councilor Braden, Councilor Murphy, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Baker, and Councilor Louie Jen. I would also like to thank members of the administration for their participation: Sheila Dillon, Chief of Housing and Director of the Mayor's Office of Housing for the city of Boston, and Tim Davis, Deputy Director of Policy Development and Research for the Mayor's Office of Housing for the city of Boston. The proposed legislation in this home rule petition will enable the city of Boston to set up a rent stabilization process and enact ordinances that regulate rent increases in multifamily housing, establish tenant eviction protections, regulate condominium and cooperative conversions, and provide redress for tenants forced to move due to demolition or substantial renovations. This act sets the maximum allowable rent increases at the Boston Metro Consumer Price Index, CPI, by plus 6%, or a maximum percentage increase of 10%, whichever is lower. Of the 231,000 units in the city, the proposed legislation would impact about 128,000 of them, somewhere around 55%, and would take effect immediately upon signing by the governor. During the hearings and working session, the committee heard from councilors, advocates, and through public testimony, concerns and questions on the home rule petition. They included discussions on rent increase restrictions, new development in the city, and just cause eviction protections. This home rule petition allows the city to provide for reasonable exemptions from rent increase restrictions, provide for fair return standards, set tenant notification and rental registration requirements, and grants the city the authority to establish a board or administrator to govern such local rent regulations. This act also authorizes the city to implement by ordinance just cause tenant eviction regulations applicable to all housing accommodations in the city of Boston, provided, however, that those ordinances provide exemptions. Under such regulations, tenants could only be evicted for cause, such as failure to pay rent, substantial violations of the lease, or use of the unit for illegal purposes. Moreover, tenants who are subject to a no-fault just cause eviction would be entitled to receive relocation fees. The petition also permits the city to establish a rent board where tenants can appeal before going to court. This home rule petition also provides exemptions to increased restrictions for certain types of residential properties, like owner-occupied properties with six or fewer dwelling units, or those in which the tenant and owner share a bathroom or kitchen facilities, units and facilities occupied by transient guests, housing accommodations in a nonprofit hospital, religious facility, extended care facility, licensed residential care facility for the elderly or higher education dormitories. Passage of this docket would allow the city to protect Boston residents from displacement caused by exorbitant rent hikes and unfair evictions by implementing rent stabilization policies aimed at preventing price gouging, encouraging continued new development, providing consistency and predictability for tenants and property owners, and establishing just cause eviction protections. And I'm now going to just add my own thoughts. This is a monumental act for the city of Boston. I commend the mayor for moving forward with a rent stabilization plan to address what has been and is an ongoing, longstanding issue of price gouging and rent gouging and displacement of residents of the city of Boston. I heard, as Chair, from all sides, when it came to the percentage increase or decrease of the CPI and how much was allowed. The mayor's proposal had it at 6%, plus 10%, and we left it there, because I did believe that was a compromise number. I'm also aware that for many people, even that protection does not prevent displacement. Unfortunately, for many, and if you were here for the community listening session, and many of my colleagues were, we heard stories of individuals who had 100% price increases, 200% price increases, 80, 90% price increases. And I understand that for some, 10% doesn't go far enough, and in most cases, I would agree. But for those individuals, this would have been a large bomb on a problem that led to them either seeking new housing, home insecurity, or being put on the street. 20-some years ago, this council proposed similar changes. We were not the city we are today. We now have 20 additional years of evidence that price gouging and displacement are continuing to impact residents in the city of Boston. I would note, for those who say that we rejected rent stabilization back in the 90s, that the city of Boston never voted to remove rent stabilization, and that this does allow for folks to reset at market rate when a tenant leaves. It takes into account a number of different issues. It's a 15-year, so from the opening of a door to 15 years later, you are exempt from this policy. But it does- But it does provide protections immediately that are desperately needed in time and gives time for other solutions, such as additional development, additional housing, additional protections to come on board and to come online. And so I fully support this, and as Chair of the Committee on Government and Council Operations, I recommend that this docket ought to pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Royal. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Councillor Flaherty. Councillor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank to, thanks to the Chair of the Committee and obviously to the administration for the work that was put in on the hearing, the listening session, and the working session. And with that, through the Chair, I respectfully submit a friendly amendment, 0408, that's in everyone's hands. If the Clerk, through the Chair, if the Clerk can read it into the record, and then I'll explain my thought process.
Councillor Flaherty has offered an amendment to the docket. Does everybody here have a copy of that amendment? Mr. Clerk, can you please read that amendment into the record, please?
Amendment of Councillor Michael Flaherty, docket number 0408. Councillor Flaherty moves to amend docket 0408 in section 2A by adding subsection 8 with the following: Properties owned by individuals whose legal primary residence is within the City of Boston and own six or fewer dwelling units.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now that we have the amendment properly before the body, I would like to call on Councillor Flaherty to speak on that amendment. Councillor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. My amendment would protect property owners who live in the City of Boston. So if you live in Boston, we know this current ordinance is, there's an owner-occupied exemption up to six. I'm asking that as a city resident, that they also afforded that opportunity to have up to six properties exempt. And again, this is for six or fewer dwelling units. And to be clear, these, and I should, let me clarify, I suggested it as a friendly amendment. It clearly technically hasn't have the ascent of, right now have the ascent of the Chair. I meant friendly in the sense of it's fairly benign in that one would argue that they're already sort of covered in this, but I wanted to codify it. So through the Chair, I want to make sure that I, with all due respect to the Chair of the Committee, that I didn't mean to mention it as a friendly amendment without consent from the Chair, but it is coming from a good place of, in spirit. Those are the people that have invested in our city. They live in our city. They're good landlords. They're good people. They're our coaches. They're our volunteers. They're working at the local nonprofits. They're in High Park. They're in Dorchester. They're in Mission Hill. They're in Alston Brighton. They're in East Boston and Charleston. They're in Roxbury. They're in Jamaica Plain, West Roxbury. They are in Mattapan. They're in South Boston. They're in every neighborhood of our city. They are what makes our city the greatest city in the country. And they're small property owners. They may own a piece of property, and they may have inherited a piece of property. They may have bought a single family, or a two-family, or a three-family on their street, across the street from their house, around the corner. We all know who they are. They're our neighbors. They're our friends. They're family members. They're constituents. And so, and they too are also not part of the problem. They're actually part of the solution because most, if not all of them, currently rent below market, and they keep their properties in good shape. And more often than not, they're renting to family members to keep them in the city. They may be renting to our senior citizens to keep them, you know, at home or in the city, in or to our veterans, or to anyone, frankly. They're folks that just look for good tenants. Folks are going to be actively involved in the neighborhood, on the street, and then are going to be giving back to our great city. We all know who they are. Some would say that the amendment, well, they're already covered because they're not doing that. They're not the gougers, and they have the ability to hit the reset button on a new tenancy. And if that's the case, alls I'm asking is that let's just codify that. So if we really appreciate and respect our neighbors and our constituents and the residents of our neighborhoods, and we know that this doesn't really necessarily impact them because they're good landlords, they're small property owners, they don't gouge, they keep their properties up to standard, then I say just take that extra step, and let's just codify it. So that when we go home to our respective districts and, as an at-large councillor, go across the city, folks know, city residents, small property owners, know that we included them in this. We weren't looking to target them. This isn't about going after those that own hundreds, thousands of units. Completely different category, and again, not my fight. I'm standing up here to ask my colleagues to support this amendment to include our neighbors and our constituents, who, again, are good landlords and respectful. And with that, I intend to, this legislation, whatever passes today, it's going up to Beacon Hill, amendable. I will be following this, and I will be advocating and fighting for this provision so that city residents, our neighbors, men and women that we know, we grew up with, they're the coaches, they're the lecturers at our local churches, they're volunteering at all hosts of events that we have in all of our neighborhoods. Those are the folks we want to keep in our city and keep in our neighborhoods. And I want to make sure that if we're going to pass something like this, that we're including them and giving them a seat at the table. As city residents, small property owners up to six units, they should be exempt as if they are an owner-occupied, because in many instances, it's the house next door to them. It's a family member left to them, or they bought a brother or sister's house. And so with that, again, because it's going up amendable, I'm going to make sure that whatever comes out of here, that we continue to fight to make sure that that exception is granted for the great people who are small property owners who make our city the great city that it is. So I urge my colleagues to consider this amendment to the ordinance and ask for passage, that it be passed in an amended version. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Councillor Royal. Councillor Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Flynn. I want to note that I do see the offer of your amendment as a friendly act. I will just state that I personally see a distinction and a difference between an individual, a senior, or a first-time home buyer, or a longtime homeowner who has tenants in their property that they reside in and rely on those tenants to help them continue to reside in the property that they all reside in, as opposed to an individual who resides in a single family or a condominium and has separate investment properties. I think there's a difference between the seniors in my district, who do rent largely below market, to individuals who have been longtime tenants within those properties and want to maintain good tenants because they live there and want to make sure that they're giving people opportunity and rely on the tenants within that building to continue to afford to live in that building, and individuals who have inherited investment properties or have additional investment properties where that investment property is providing income above and beyond their need to live and reside on that property. I do think there's a difference. I would welcome any data on those individuals on the whole providing below-market rents. I have not seen that data. Welcome that data. And I would just say that what, in terms of them being already exempt, or the, this does not apply to them, this would apply to anyone who is raising their rents beyond 10% and has had a property for over 15 years. If they are doing that, I think, in an investment property, I do think that they should be subject to what we have here. I don't think there should be an exemption to that. And so for that reason, I would not support that exemption. I do think that there are many small property owners who will be exempt because they live on their property. And I want to make sure that we, as we move forward as a body, as amendments are proposed, that we also just ensure that, as a city, we have had a number, it was incredibly difficult. I think multiple councillors were emotional upon hearing people crying about losing a place to live in this city, losing apartments that they had for 20, 30 years because somebody did buy their property as an investment property, or somebody inherited their property and decided they wanted to clear them out. I would ask my colleagues to support this as it's written, as it's passed, regardless of where these amendments go. I'm sure this amendment will go up for a vote, because I think that it's important that we speak as one body and one voice to that issue. But everyone's vote is their own. On this amendment, I would not support it as a friendly amendment. It would have to be voted upon, but I appreciate the nature and the spirit of how you introduce it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Royal. I'm going to go to Councillor Louis Jen, then I'm going to go to Councillor Bach. Councillor Louis Jen, you have the floor.
Councillor Bach, my head or...
That's okay. I'm going to go to you first, Councillor.
What I will say about this, and what gives me some hesitation, Councillor Flaherty, thank you for offering it, is that to really be on par and to really parallel what the administration has offered, it's a five-unit exemption, not a six-unit exemption, because five of the units are rented out, and there's one that is, that's for owners, for the owner who lives in the property. So really, to be on parallel and to be on the same track as what the mayor has offered, the exemption should really be five. What this covers, when you're exempting six units and not requiring the owner to live there, that means someone who owns two triple-deckers. At that point, if you're allowing for two, someone who owns two triple-deckers, you're looking at it at people who have investment properties and not just the neighbor next door. So that is my issue with the number here. I think five would be a much more reasonable number, and at the point of six, we are talking about people who are investing, and we're not really, you know, we're capturing more people than we want to with this carve-out exemption. I think, I hear your concern about oftentimes those who are providing naturally occurring affordable housing are the people who own one or two units or three units, and so want to make sure that we are not somehow harming them. I think the 10% increase amount, well, the 10% max with the 6% plus CPI with a max of 10% still gives our residents and all throughout our city and every neighborhood the opportunity to increase if there are property taxes that increase or other issues, but I think six is too much, and I think that's reflected in how the administration wrote this, because the exemption is for six units but requires an owner to live in there. So it's really a five-unit rental exemption. That's the comment I wanted to make. Thank you, City Council President.
Thank you, Councillor Louis Jen. The Chair recognizes Councillor Bach. Councillor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Councillor Bach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to, I think, I'm also going to be voting no on this amendment, but it's a friendly no, and I wanted to just speak to sort of some next steps I think we could do on this front. When Councillor Flaherty raised this in the working session, you know, the question was immediately asked about how many people it would impact, and I think the challenge that we have, which was reflected in the info request that we all got back this morning, is that because currently, people don't have to register the beneficial interest of their LLCs, which is how a lot of property is held in the city, including property that's held by small, like entities, you don't actually have, the city doesn't have data on how many people own, whether it's six units or five, or four, or three, like, it's not something that we actually have attached to their Boston resident identity. I think that there's definitely an opportunity to think about, like, are there ways that we could actually, like, get that information? And frankly, just in terms of the conversations that we've had in other zones about vacant properties, about investment properties, about all that, like, I think it would be great data for the city to have. And to me, once we knew what that number was, we might then be in the position to talk about a reasonable exemption. And I hear you, Councillor Flaherty, on continuing to chase this up at the State House. Maybe that's something we figure out in the coming months. There's also, I just want to flag for the council that section two of this, I have the legislation in front of me, the first sentence of section two says, "The City of Boston may, by ordinance, regulate the rent in multifamily housing and provide for reasonable exemptions from such regulation." Then section A says this section won't apply to these, and it lists a bunch of exemptions. But actually, that first sentence, what it's allowing the council to do is to establish more specific exemptions when it comes back to us by ordinance. So I just want to flag, because of this sort of timing and like, and the logistical data question about, like, how many people are, is this, and what exactly is the right cutoff, et cetera, that even if we don't support Councillor Flaherty's amendment today, that in the, if we did get the enabling permission from the state, we would have the opportunity to come back on that with more information and potentially with a voluntary registration system for people who wanted to raise their hand and say, hey, I only own three properties. So I wanted to say all that, Mr. Chair, to just say, I'm going to be voting against this today because I don't think that the information is there for us to be able to administer this exemption, but I think that we could definitely get there, and I think that this council would have another bite at the apple in the ordinance and that the enabling legislation allows us to add exemptions like that. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Bach. The Chair recognizes Councillor Lara. Councillor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I just wanted to stand to say that I'm also not going to be supporting this amendment today for all of the reasons that my colleagues share, but most importantly, because when we codify something like this, we're not just codifying it for the people that Councillor Flaherty outlined here today, which one can argue are not going to be impacted by this home rule petition at all because of the nature of how they are providing houses in the units, in the six units that they own, but we're also codifying it for all the people who are not in good faith providing housing. And so putting this as an amendment, changing it, isn't just a protection and exemption for the people who live in the City of Boston, who are our neighbors, who are not raising people's rent. It also includes everybody else. And if we're going to be responsible legislators, we have to look at what the unintended consequence of that is. When we give an exception for people who own two triple-deckers or one six-unit building, we can't assume that all of those people are in good faith providing housing that is below market value. And so we are then handing an exception to bad actors who are raising rents in the double digits, who are giving folks 20% rent increases. And a lot of the people who we listen to, who came here to testify about their rent increases, live in triple-deckers. They don't, they live where maybe their landlord does live in the City of Boston. And so I think that, I think it's a noble request to make, but I don't think that it is an assumption that is really in alignment with what we're seeing in reality and what our constituents are experiencing. And I think that it would be a dangerous exception to make, given that we would be making that exception not just for the good actors, but also for the bad actors in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lara. The Chair recognizes Councillor Flaherty. Councillor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. Just to respond to a couple of my colleagues, obviously, and I appreciate the feedback, the methodology between going from five to six on the city resident was just because that, in addition, they're owning additional property, which requires them to pay property tax, and as we all know, the exorbitant property taxes and the increases that folks have been feeling over the last few years. So when I looked at the exemption, I said, it's a courtesy, clearly because they're getting hit a little harder on the property tax end to give them another one. And you had raised it through one of the sessions, I don't know if it was the working session or the listening session, that you talked about maybe some type of abatement or some type of tax deferral for those that are paying, that are charging below-market rent. So I sort of took sort of that theme into place and said, well, I guess we could do city resident, five units, but felt that because they would own additional property and they'd be handling and carrying additional property tax. And obviously, appreciate the inquiry, and also to my colleague about the LLCs. I understand the logistics around that. Clearly, we're going to have to set up, like, we have a rental registration, and we're going to have to have a sort of a rent stabilization, rent control registration. So it's all sort of pot and possible, but I think that following it through this process and making sure to continue to advocate, advocate through the enabling process will be the opportunity for us to, again, to stick up for our residents and our neighbors and the folks that make our city the great city. So I appreciate the feedback, and at this point, we'll move the question and see if we can get support for this exemption. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Flaherty. Thank you, Councillor Braden, and thank you to my colleague, Councillor Flaherty, for that amendment. I'm going to support the amendment, and I think it's a reasonable compromise. I don't think it's an outrageous request, and I hear about some support for landlords throughout the city. And I just want to highlight that these landlords that own these homes are not the enemy. I think Councillor Flaherty is proposing a compromise somewhere in the middle. This debate is about give and take, and trying to also recognize the important hard work contributions that many landlords have made to the city. So we want to make sure that our landlords are part of the solution, and they're also being squeezed and being hurt as well. But we should not, we should not penalize these landlords for the hard work, for their dedication, for their commitment to the city. As Councillor Flaherty has mentioned, they are our neighbors. They are our literally coaches and active in the community organizations and contribute to various nonprofits. So they are part of the community, and we have a lot of those, a lot of those owners in South Boston and across the city as well, High Park, West Roxbury, Dorchester as well. So just want to say thank you to Councillor Flaherty. I know the amendment is going to fail, but I'm supporting it because I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you, Councillor Braden.
Thank you, President Flynn.
Is anyone else looking to speak on the matter? Councillor Flaherty, will you welcome to speak?
Just move the question.
The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a point of clarification through the chair. I wanted, I wonder if you're saying that you, they don't price gouge, and so I guess they're not going to ever reach 10%. So I think, I find that point to be moot. But I want, I'm asking you, if you're going to be supporting it on the state, will you be supporting it to move forward if your amendment fails today?
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. I have one from the chair to the, to Council Royal. When the, when this goes up to the State House, and it's, and it can be amended up at the State House, can you explain that process? What happens if there's a major change or a minor change? Does it come back to the city council and we review it? Or does the legislators take the initiative to decide what they think is best for the city?
So the legislation that's before you, the home rule petition before you, does allow the State House to make edits to the home rule petition at the State House through their own legislative process. However, if they make edits that are considered substantial, that's the word that is used, substantial edits, then it would have to come back to the city for approval of their substantial edits. And so if they make grammatical edits, if they make sort of form, but not necessarily large substantive edits, then that would continue forward. If they make what is considered a substantial edit, then it would, in fact, come back to the city for approval of that edit.
Thank you, Council Royal.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we're going to do a roll call vote on Council Flaherty's amendment first.
Roll call vote on amendment to docket 04085 by Council Michael Flaherty. Councilor Arroyo.
No.
Councilor Arroyo, no. Councilor Baker.
Aye.
Councilor Baker, aye. Councilor Bock.
Nay.
Councilor Bock, nay. Council Braden.
No.
Council Braden, no. Council Coletta.
No.
Council Coletta, no. Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, no. Council Flaherty.
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Flynn.
Yes.
Council Flynn, yes. Council Lara. Council Lara, no. Council Lou Jean.
No.
Council Lou Jean, no. Council Mehea. Council Mehea, no. Council Murphy.
Yes.
Council Murphy, yes. Council Rurrell.
No.
Council Rurrell, no. Docket number 0408 amendment has received nine votes in the negative and four in the affirmative. The amendment fails.
Back to, before we go back to Council Royal and for a vote, I do want to recognize Council Baker. Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. In this time of increased IDP, increased linkage, you know, transfer taxes, we're going after an industry that has created generational wealth for the middle class in Boston. That villain that owns two, three deckers, you know, that villain, if it comes, if he comes from my neighborhood, he or she comes from my neighborhood, they planted a stake in the neighborhood 20, 30 years ago, put their, put their resources on the line. It's not easy being a landlord, especially a small landlord. And I appreciate the good counsel from South Boston sticking up for the smaller landlord because like, all the bureaucracy that we're adding these days, adding to the city bureaucracy, 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 the more layers of government that we add, it means that's not money going into building actual affordable units, what we need, or taking care of that family that might be able to pay 1,500 or two grand. We don't even have a conversation about that family that can pay 1,800, two grand, but the rent might be 2,800 or 2,700. We don't even talk about that family. In this, to be clear, this proposal is kind of fear. 10%? I don't even know, anybody that I know that owns property would never go up 10%. For the most part, if you get a good tenant, it stays the same with, and again, that's people I know. It stays the same. That's a small tenant, that's a small landlord, that's who the good counsel from South Boston is talking about. They'll stay there for as long as they need to stay there. And then, anyways, you know, the market rate that you can recalibrate when, when the, excuse me, you can recalibrate when you have a vacancy, that's good. I mean, most of that small landlord isn't going to recalibrate up a whole lot, 100 bucks, 200 bucks normally is what it is. But the point I'm trying to make is, like, we layering government on here, a rent board. I was a custodian in here when we had the rent board upstairs. There's like 40 people up there. What's that got to be, another, another four grand, four million? I mean, come on, when does it end? We're not making it easy to build units. The layers and layers and layers of government and paperwork and just what you have to go through to build something, or God forbid, if you're trying to go after MHC money or something like that, through the state, the hoops that you got to go through there, thousand page, thousand pages of applications, what you need to do. Like, there's no help on the other side. And the landlord, the owner, is evil in this discussion. And that has to stop. It has to stop because the good landlords, they're all, if they're not ready to go now, they're getting ready to go. Just on its face, rent control, I believe, is bad policy. We lived through it. My neighborhood went through it. I never even saw anyone's house get painted back in the day. Never mind, put an addition on, put new windows in, insulate the place. So that's what I think of rent control. I will be voting no on this here today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will open by saying that this is a monumental step forward in terms of trying to stabilize our housing in the present housing crisis in the city of Boston. And it's not just us that are in this battle to try and stabilize our housing for working families and across the Commonwealth. And this is a really incredible step forward in trying to address the issues of price gouging across the city. We heard horrendous stories the other day in public testimony about tenants who are seeing 100% increase in their rents. You know, this, this, this is going to have incredible implications for Alston Brighton. When you aggregate the neighborhood share of units that will be stabilized, Alston Brighton comes out top. We have, I think it's 22,000, 162 units in that. And that's not counting new, new construction that has happened in the last, the last 15 years. And that amounts to another 10. That exclusion of over 10,000 units that have been constructed in the last 10 years leaves a lot of units exempted from this policy, which is a concern for me. I think the other issue of great concern is that we have a huge number of our units in Alston Brighton, I'm just trying to pull up the numbers here, that are, we have a huge number of units that turn over every year because we have a very high density of students. And that means there'll be an automatic reset to market rate every year. And again, I think while this is, this will have an important, the market reset will have important implications in our neighborhood in particular and some of the other neighborhoods that see a high turnover. You know, I'm hoping, you know, one of the challenges we have is that in the city of Boston, we have a 0.5, a 0.5 vacancy rate. So we have a very, very high demand for limited, limited housing that's not, we're just not able to meet the demand. And we need to build more units that are actually affordable for working families and middle-class family, middle-class earners in the city. We have, we're just not doing it. We have an, the graph of what we've been building in the last 15 years is really trends towards more luxury, high-end housing, when what we really need is more affordable housing for working folks in the city. So, you know, although I have concerns about all of this, I will be voting to support this home rule petition. I hope that we can move the, move the needle on this issue. It's long past time, and I wholeheartedly support this and also applaud the mayor for her leadership in this space. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. The chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to be sure to stand up and extend my gratitude and appreciation to the chair for your leadership in shepherding this docket through the body. I want to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful questions, feedbacks, and suggestions. I also want to thank Mayor Wu and her team for having the courage to produce this important docket despite certain tactics by certain special interest groups to delay and derail this. Finally, I want to thank the advocates, both past and present, who have helped shape how we will move forward in this watershed moment we are all living in as a city. Boston is increasingly out of reach for, for a majority of our seniors, immigrant populations, families, and individuals. Bad actors who take advantage of a bullish rental market can undo price gouge in a way that is displacing hardworking individuals who just want to be able to live in this city and contribute to our local economy. There is urgency to get this done, and especially in my district, and I feel this urgency every single day. The current system needs a serious adjustment. For those who still claim that we should continue without protections has not been on the receiving end of call after call, heartbreaking conversations with folks who have been told that their landlords, by their landlords, that their rents are going to be increased by at least $1,000, which is out of reach for many individuals who simply can't afford it. I think we all agree that predictability and stability is good for both tenants and landlords and ultimately create healthy and thriving neighborhoods. Rental prices in East Boston have soared 227% since 2011. On average, that's an almost 19% increase every single year for the last 12 years. It's higher than any other neighborhood in the city of Boston. My neighbors need relief and they need these protections. This proposal is, as it's been mentioned, just one tool to keep people in place in addition to the very necessary production of truly affordable housing. I do believe that what we are discussing here today walks the delicate balance of protecting folks while also ensuring that small landlords have money for capital repairs. I think this is also a huge win with the inclusion of just cause eviction and the expansion of condo conversion to a larger portion of the housing stock in my district, which includes many of the triple deckers. After requesting additional data, I have the same concerns as Council Braden, just coming to learn that over 10,000 units of rental housing is in the pipeline for District One. I've expressed concerns that this new construction would continue to be exempt for another 15 years. However, I will continue my advocacy and push any new development to have a floor of at least 20% with a healthy spread of AMIs that is reflective of our community. Additionally, I've spoken to many small landlords, and I do not think that they are awful people despite what has been said here on this floor today. I have made sure to have multiple conversations at kitchen tables with folks over coffee to get their perspective. And I'm thinking of individuals who own their own homes and maybe, you know, an investment property that is a two-family, and they keep their rents below market. I've heard from them that embarking even on the smallest capital repairs to their homes, like placing dormers or additions or comparable fixes, is onerous and expensive, given our current approval process. And so from what I've learned from them is that they have to hire an architect, which is thousands of dollars, a zoning attorney, which is another thousand dollars, just to get their plans through, only to have them potentially denied by the ZBA and ISD. I encourage the administration to start those conversations, to consider providing relief or technical assistance with these small repairs as another relief mechanism for smaller landlords, as these additions and these small fixes could potentially contribute to the below-market units that we are all looking for and hoping to expand here in the city of Boston. And so I want to thank everybody who has reached out to me on this topic, and it's been many people from both sides. I want to thank them for taking their time out of their day to express their opinions and in meeting with me. I want to encourage continued conversation on this because at the end of the day, what we all want is passage at the State House for this home rule petition, protections for our tenants, while also ensuring that smaller landlords are at the table and able to upkeep with their property. So I will be voting in favor of this proposal today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta. The chair recognizes Council Lara. Council Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to rise to one share that I am going to be voting in favor of this proposal today. I am not going to share a lot of my concerns with what's in the proposal currently in the home rule petition because I think that I've done that and we have reached a compromise. And I think that the place where we are now, which is to make no amendments and pass this home rule petition, that is, is the compromise. And I'm really happy with that compromise because I really do think that we have an opportunity to show a broad unified front at the State House that's really reflective of the popularity of rent stabilization, not just here in the city of Boston, but as has recently been reported in the entire state of Massachusetts. Now, I want to take a moment to talk about rent stabilization and how stabilizing rents and really capping the growth of rents impacts the market. And the reason why I think that that's relevant right now, and I didn't anticipate to say that, is because we have a lot of conversations about homeowners. And we have a lot of conversations about property taxes and how people are being overburdened with property taxes. Stabilizing rents in the city of Boston, right? Luxury condo development, it really sets the speculative market awry. It increases the cost of living, and it also increases the value of people's homes. So allowing people to build as much luxury as they want without any rent caps at whatever levels they want to charge, $3,000, $4,000, impacts our homeowners in the sense that it changes the value. They're extracting value from this land. If you are a homeowner and you own a single-family home and everybody around you is building luxury apartments, how those luxury apartments are being priced impacts at what level that homeowner's home is being valued, and that impacts their property taxes. Making sure that we are stabilizing rents positively impacts not just renters, but also homeowners. It keeps speculation under control, and that is good news for people who purchase their homes and want to stay in it. For people who are buying homes and they're trying to flip them and just make as much profit as possible, it's not good news for them, and that is not who we're here to protect today. So I just wanted to say that because I think that it's really important because we focus this conversation around stabilizing rents around only renters. But homeowners, seniors who live in their homes, who can't afford their property taxes, benefit from making sure that we're keeping speculation under control in their neighborhoods, keeping the value of their homes in line with ultimately inflation and the cost of living so that they can continue to afford paying their property taxes. So I, I'm going to be supporting this. I just wanted to say that I really do think that that is, it's an untalked about, a benefit that we don't talk about enough here on the city council. I think that this is an incredible milestone. It's decades in the making, and it's really an invited shift in not only public opinion, but policy. And it's been driven by the work of organizations like City Life and the Right to the City Coalition. I really want to thank Mayor Wu for her leadership and her bravery. It's really hard work to manage so many competing needs and help us move in a direction that although is not perfect, as my colleagues had shared, is really getting us one step closer to where we need to be today. So today, I am going to be celebrating. But tomorrow, we're really going to set our sights on Beacon Hill, where we're going to get to work on the next phase of what our work is going to be, which is bringing increased tenant protections to the people of Boston and honestly, all across the state. I think it's way overdue that we really lift the ban on rent control all across the state of Massachusetts. So the people of Boston have spoken. They have let us know what they want. And honestly, they let us know what they wanted 30 years ago on the ballot when they voted to keep rent control. And so today, we have the opportunity in front of us, and I'm going to take it to vote yes and let our constituents know that we are listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lara. The chair recognizes Council Rurrell. Council Rurrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to the chair and the mayor and the advocates for getting us here. As we all know, Boston is in a housing crisis, and our lack of affordable housing primarily chases out black and brown families. It prevents recent college graduates from calling Boston their permanent home. This form of rent stabilization will not fix that. Even with that said, and even if we're not in a housing crisis, these measures will still be necessary. There are not solutions to our housing shortages. There are protections to provide many of our renters with a minimum level of predictability and security. The vast majority of our city landlords, and especially our small landlords, already act well within these standards. Our renters, however, should not face homelessness as a byproduct of someone else's business transaction. This policy is no silver bullet, but it do provide renters ranging from families to elders with enough security to plan their financial lives. As we work towards implementation, we need to ensure that we provide adequate protections for small landlords and for those who provide communal housing for lower-income renters. But those conversations should be saved for a time when we know we are acting on appropriate legal authority. But this is a historical moment, and I look forward to voting yes on this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Rurrell. The chair recognizes Council Bock. Council Bock, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Probably the core role of government
Probably the core role of government is to make sure that people have what they need to live, and shelter is one of those fundamental needs. And I think about this a lot when we talk about the housing market, because, you know, across the street there's a 7-Eleven. I'm sure many of us duck in from time to time, and in there, there's probably like five different kinds of luxury water that you could buy at various prices, right? Including some that many of us would consider exorbitant and too much to pay for water, but I guess you really like those electrolytes. The reason this council doesn't talk about the pricing of that is because there's affordable water that comes out of the tap for everybody. And so, that's what government provides, and it means it's okay for there to be a separate luxury market that serves people's preferences, where ability to pay is what determines your access to the good. It would not be okay, and we would be in here talking about the price of that water if the only place you could get it was 7-Eleven, if it didn't come out of the tap. The reality is that when this country decides to fund decent, affordable housing for every resident who needs it, which was in theory the project of public housing in the 1930s, when we do that, when we provide the basic good for everybody, then there would not be cause for this council, or for the State House, or for any level of government to be talking about regulating the private luxury housing market, because we would be talking genuinely about whether people want luxury finishes and exactly what intersection you live on and all these kinds of preference-type things. The reality is that this is not a normal market. This is a desperation market because of the half a percent or less of vacancy that Councilor Braden referenced. It's a your-money-or-your-life kind of situation. That's not the kind of situation that government should enable. So from my perspective, that's really the policy choice. You either don't talk about regulating rent and a private real estate market, because you're providing abundant social housing, a choice which our country should make, has tried to make in the past, should make again. But until you make that, when you're talking about a core thing that people need to live, that they need to be able to plan their lives, like you have to be able to have reasonable controls. And I just, I really want to emphasize that, because I think that sometimes we can get up in the clouds on this, and it's just like, Boston is only Boston if Bostonians can stay. And to me, you know, we've talked a lot about the small landlords and the critical piece of the puzzle of people who provide housing. I'm glad that there is a housing production exemption, because I think that's a critical piece, like Councilor Rell said. I think that this legislation as proposed, as the compromise that Councilor Lara says that it is, is being respectful of those folks precisely by, as Councilor Baker referenced, you know, not applying functionally, even though it applies in theory, but not in practice, to people who keep their rents below the rates that are being mentioned here. That's already recognizing the important role that our small landlords pay, that folks who are offering rent below market, like, serve. But I just, I just really want to emphasize that that's the real choice. Like, and when the State House and the federal government is ready to make that happen, make us have decent, affordable homes for every American who needs one, then we can talk about luxury housing as something that we care about, just as little as how much they're charging for smart water today. But we're not there. That's not the reality, and it's really important for us to pass this today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Block. The Chair recognizes Councilor Louie Jean. Councilor Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you. I rise also to say that this is an incredible moment for the city, for us to really be intervening and stabilizing people's rents. As a majority-renter city, really centering what we've been hearing from renters, we all get calls. I'm sure it's not just me, where the majority of the calls we get are about affordable housing. What can you do? How can you help me? And we can help by this intervention, by preventing rent gouging. This Home Rule petition also includes long-sought tenant protections that frankly, and me as, you know, as an attorney who used to practice in housing court, never thought we'd come to a point where we would actually see the City Council, a majority of us, in support of just cause provisions that will only allow evictions for a cause. That's a big deal. That's going to be a big deal for so many of our residents. And there are so many other protections, like strengthening protections for condo conversions and demolitions. I'd also like to say, I think, in case it was insinuated earlier, like, I know that our small landlords are the ones who power our city. My father is a small-time landlord. My objections are, we can't ascertain what is an investment and who are the folks who are, like my father, providing that naturally occurring affordable housing that is for our residents, who are working class and Black and Brown, who can't afford the rent that corporate landlords are charging. And so this is advancing legislation that is, is right now what we think can pass, hopefully, on Beacon Hill with our continued lobbying and our continued efforts, while recognizing that there was a call for a lot more by advocates who've been working on this for decades. And so, this is going to help level the market. It's going to make it more predictable for tenants and landlords. And there's room in this legislation for us to do more, and for us to, while not preventing development here in the city. I think that there is incredible, you know that we're doing something good when the real estate industry is so scared, and when they are, you know, making sure that they are putting in so much money to prevent this from passing. They sent a tracker to one of my COCO with the Councilor events to see what I would say about rent stabilization. And I said the same thing in private, as I said in public, which is, this legislation, while not perfect, is going to do a lot of good for a lot of our renters. So true, whoever you are pretending to be a constituent, rent stabilization is important for our residents, and it is our residents who are being pushed out that we have to center in this conversation. And so there's so much work we have to do. This is only one small piece of the puzzle, but an important piece. I think all of the advocates who came here want to shout out so many people who have been dedicating so much time to this. And I know this isn't enough, but it is going to get us in the right direction, combined with other tools. So thank you, and I look forward to the work that's going to continue after this vote.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Mahia. Councilor Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to thank the administration for their bold move in regards to helping to address the housing crisis here in the city of Boston. You know, as someone who grew up here, when rent control was initiated, you know, what I saw is that a lot of people of color were able to live here in the city of Boston. And I talk about the fact that when I lived in New York, I had a rent-stabilized apartment that helped me stay in the city of New York for 10 years, actually. And so when we think about housing and we think about this moment and what it means here in Boston, you know, I can't help to think about how many people we have lost to Brockton, Randolph, you know, and other parts of the city, excuse me, of the state, because they can no longer afford to live here, but yet still have to commute to work here in the city of Boston, and the financial hardship that we continue to, and we stow on those who are most vulnerable. So I am looking forward to voting yes on this with the understanding that this is just the beginning. There's still a lot of work to do. If we're really serious about housing justice, it cannot begin and end with just rent control. I think that we're really going to have to look at our AMI, how we define affordable. Hello, right? Who, affordable to who? Right? Like, we, as a city, could do a little bit more to push the envelope, to make sure that we're keeping our residents here. And I think that this is just the beginning of what I believe when we think about housing justice. And so I look forward to working alongside the advocates to do just that. And I want to thank the administration for moving us in that direction so that we can begin to repair the harm and hopefully stay here. You know, I talk about the fact that my mom had a Section 8 voucher, and she lived in a triple-decker. And when that triple-decker was purchased, her rent tripled to the point where she was no longer going to be able to afford to keep her voucher as a low-wage worker, 74-years-old and still too poor to retire. So I had to take out my entire 401K, every single cent that I had, to be able to buy a house, so my mom could live on one side, and my brother and I and our kids could live on the other. Those are the sacrifices that so many people are having to make today, but not everyone has the opportunity to do that. And so, my hope is, is that as we continue to move through this conversation, that we do so in centering the harm that we have created for so many here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Mahia. Councilor Royo seeks acceptance of the committee report in passage of Docket 0408 as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Clerk, can we do a roll-call vote, please? I stand corrected. This docket wasn't amended. Mr. Clerk, can you take a roll-call vote on Docket 0408, please?
Docket number 0408, roll-call vote, Councilor Royo. Yes. Councilor Royo, yes. Councilor Baker.
Nay.
Councilor Baker, nay. Councilor Bark?
Aye.
Councilor Bark, aye. Councilor Braden?
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Coletta?
Yes.
Councilor Coletta, yes. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson?
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Councilor Flaherty?
Yes.
Councilor Flaherty, yes. Councilor Flynn?
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Lara?
Yes.
Councilor Lara, yes. Councilor Louie Jean?
Yes.
Councilor Louie Jean, yes. Councilor Mahia?
Yes.
Councilor Mahia, yes. Councilor Murphy?
No.
Councilor Murphy, no. Councilor Rell?
Yes.
Councilor Rell, yes. Docket number 0408 has received 11 votes in the affirmative and 2 in the negative.
Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0516, please?
Docket number 0516, Councilor Bark and Flynn offer the following: Petition for a special law relative to enact to make certain changes in the law relative to historic Beacon Hill District.
The Chair recognizes Councilor Block. Councilor Block, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for co-sponsoring this with me. Again, we share Beacon Hill. This is a refile from last year. It's a Home Rule petition. It relates to, there's a tiny fringe of the Beacon Hill District that wasn't included in the original district line, because at the time, the city was doing fire station construction, and there was an issue of conflict. And so the idea is to actually pull it all the way down to the block line instead of being short of those 40 feet, and then confirming something about the commission's ability to charge fines. So again, refile, and we'll be hoping to have a hearing on it along with the Bay Village one from last week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Bark. I won't speak on this matter, but just want to say I'm proud to share Beacon Hill with Councilor Bark, wonderful people representing Beacon Hill. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, can you please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Councilor Louie Jean, Councilor Rell, Councilor Mahia? This docket, 0516, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket 0517?
Docket number 0517, Councilors Braden and Coletta offer the following: Resolution designating March 8, 2023, as International Women's Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to suppress suspend Rule 12 and add Councilor Louie Jean.
Hearing no objection. Councilor Louie Jean is added. The Chair recognizes Councilor Braden.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I always remember March 8 as International Women's Day, because it also happens to be the birthday of my mother-in-law, Anna T. McCarthy. So in my time in Boston and with the McCarthys, we've always celebrated International Women's Day on the 8th of March. So it's a very special day, and it's one of those things, I think it's really important, because we have days in the year where we celebrate Presidents and Columbus and all sorts of other guys. And it's nice to have one day in the year where we actually celebrate women. Gender equality is a fundamental human right, and the full participation of women in every aspect of society is integral to solving the world's most threatening social, economic, and political problems. You know, I also think it's pretty fairly recent that in this historic year in Massachusetts that the constitutional leaders of our state, with the exception of Secretary of State Galvin, are women. And it's a really momentous time that we seem to be moving in the right direction after a very, very long time in the waiting. We also want to remember that the LGBTQIA and women and gender minorities around the world are also facing incredible discrimination for being gay, bisexual, lesbian, transgender, and all of the different gender minorities. They're still being disproportionately facing acts of violence. And we see an increasing trend in this country and across the world due to increased levels of authoritarianism, that the first people to face these discriminatory practices, abuse, and terror, actually, are the gender minorities and our transgender brothers and sisters. And also, Black and Brown transgender women face a disproportionately high level of threats of violence across the world and in our own nation here in the United States. So I really want to remember the women that are leading, the folks we know from history, who we look up to and remember and revere and celebrate, but there's so many unspoken cheeros in our communities and in our city and across the state and across the world who do quietly get along with the work of making the world a better place every day, and their work goes largely unnoticed and unrecognized. So although it's International Women's Day, a very important day to celebrate the contributions of women, it's also to remember the women who are just quietly getting along and making change happen in the courage of power, in our communities, in our schools, and in our homes. So thank you, and I'm very happy to offer this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. The Chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I want to thank my co-sponsor for her invitation to include me on this resolution. I also want to give a happy birthday to an incredible woman in my life, one of my staffers and a shining star in my office, Gabriela Ramirez. Happy birthday. Yes, you can give her an applause, if that's okay. She's great. She's doing an incredible job. I want to be sure to recognize this moment that we're all currently in, and just uplift the fact that this 13-member body now has a majority of women, 13 incredible, brilliant, bright women. And that's just within the last, that's just within the last couple of years. And, you know, I think that it's time and it's relevant to just recognize folks like Congresswoman Anna Pressley, Mayor Michelle Wu, Attorney General Andrea Campbell, Mary Janey, Clerk Maureen Feeny, and the list goes on, just to pay homage to them and what they did. We'll never know the struggles and the sacrifice of what it took to get here and what they had to go through, so I just want to be sure to name them in this space. Promoting and supporting the ascension of women in positions of power was a lot of the reason why I became involved in policy and political work. I studied human rights in college with a focus on the advancement of women, both domestically and abroad. I cut my teeth working at the Massachusetts Women's Political Caucus, crisscrossing the strait trying to elect women to everything from school committee to Congress. And it's all because I was obsessed and still am passionate about ensuring that there is adequate representation at every decision-making table for women of every race, class, and ethnic background. Our life experiences and perspectives matter and ultimately help to craft better pieces of policy. There are examples of progress all around us, yes, including this body. However, we know that gender inequality still exists, especially for women of color, LGBTQIA women, and within that community, Black and Brown transgender individuals. Many in this country still face gender-based violence, legal discrimination, and microaggressions that are barriers to the realization of social, political, and economic justice. Health disparities for women are prevalent in our society, especially as it relates to maternal health. Access to adequate reproductive care is under attack at a national level. We are still fighting for our bodily autonomy, and I can't believe that I still have to say this, in 2023. More women lost their jobs during the pandemic than men, based on societal expectations and pressures to stay home and raise families. And so this is why, on days like today, we have to go beyond social media posts and go beyond just celebrating our history and honoring the advancement of women and how far we've come, and just all make a conscious effort on a local and global level, on an interpersonal level in society, to empower those identifying as women in our lives today and every day. And so today, I reaffirm my commitment to guarantee the rights of women and girls in dismantling any system or structure that furthers gender inequality in all aspects of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Coletta. The Chair recognizes Councilor Louie Jean. Councilor Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to Councilor Braden for adding me. This is
This is one of my father's favorite days as the father of four daughters. This is a holiday he's always taken to make sure that we know that we are fighting for a world in which there is gender parity. I think Counselor Coletta, at one point when you were saying that there were seven women on city council, at one point you said there were 13. And I was like, oh, no. But then I was like, then I said Ruth Bader Ginsburg was always asked, Justice Ginsburg was always asked, when will there be enough women on the Supreme Court? And she always said, till there are nine. And so, same for this body. And so, I just want to rise and say that there's a lot of cause for celebration this morning, oh, wait, with a lot of love to my fellow city councillors who are not, don't identify as women, we love y'all too, but till there are 13, still. That, you know, it's a celebration. This morning at the breakfast, the annual breakfast at Simmons College, Patricia Montez from San Francisco said that in her, where she's from, Honduras, it's not a celeb, they don't call it a celebration, they call it a commemoration because there's this recognition of all of the work that we have left to do for gender parity. And I think about gender-based violence and all the, our community organizations that are working to prevent and really tackle domestic violence. And gender-based violence was often at the root of a lot of the forms of violence that we see in our city and in the country. So, just highlighting so many women who work in this space and organizations like Shakira Robinson of Shakira Story, Carleen Desiree of Haitian Women, Afab Casa Mierna, Patricia Montez, and so many other folks in organizations that are really looking to make sure that we get gender parity in the home and that women and folks who identify as women feel safe in homes, so that they can feel safe at work and everywhere else that they present. So, happy International Women's Day, and thank you to everyone who does the work.
Thank you, Counselor Louie Jean. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I won't take too long. Thank you so much to the lead sponsors for filing this. I rise in support of this resolution. I'm greatly appreciative of the women that have paved the way for me. My, from my mother, my grandmother, my great-grandmother, and all the people, my great-grandmother, who I'm named after, but also, today is my niece's birthday, Amani Mercury. Happy birthday to her. I just wanted to shout out to the women in District 7 who tirelessly work to repair the harm that's been done to our communities. Shout out to all of the sisters here on the council. It's not easy. We are enough when we're sexualized or when we are known for our beauties, our art, or our entertainment, but we are also enough when we come to legislative body and make changes. So, Mr. President, thank you so much for, I'm sure you're going to support this because you yourself are always so kind and such a gentleman to the sisters here on the council, and I wanted to recognize you for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Anyone else like to speak on this or add their name? And I would like to say that I'm definitely supporting this. I had the opportunity this morning driving in with my wife to work, I dropped my wife off at work, and we were talking about this day as she was helping me send out a tweet. And what, what we were really talking about is the role women play in our military. And it's the fastest-growing demographic in the VA hospital, the VA healthcare system. And they don't have the necessary quality medical care, gender-specific, at the VA Medical Center. And here they are, these women, many of them injured in war, serving our nation, coming back to our country, and they don't have access to the same medical care, same medical treatment that I would have. So, that's why I focus a lot in this body on women veterans in making sure that they have their services and programs because they really put their life on the line, fought for our country, deserve respect, but so doesn't all of the women here in this body but across our city as well. Proud to learn from my mother and from my, my four sisters and certainly my wife and daughter about the importance of the incredible role women have played in our city, in our country, across the world, actually. Anyone else like to speak or add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Royo, Counselor Bark, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Lara, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Ruel. Please add the Chair. Counselor Braden and Counselor Coletta and Counselor Louie Jean seek dispendence of the rules. Adoption of 0517, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the document has been adopted. We're going to take things slightly out of order. Mr. Clerk, can you please read document 0518 and 0520 together? Document number 0518, Counselor Mejia offer the following: Resolution calling for equal treatment of all missing women cases in the City of Boston. And document number 0520, Counselor Mejia offer the following: Order for a hearing to audit how the Boston Police Department responds to Latino, Spanish-speaking residents in the City of Boston. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia on document 0518 and document 0520. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President Flynn. Today is International Women's Day, and while we celebrate all of the progress we have made towards gaining a more equitable footing in society, there's still a lot of work to be done. I stand on the shoulders of women who have fought for someone like myself to have the opportunity to have literally a seat at the table. Shirley Chisholm, the first black woman to be elected to the United States Congress, said, "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." Thanks to women like her, I now have a seat at this table as the first Latina to represent the people of Boston. As someone who has had the privilege of sitting here, I understand that my role as the only Latina representing the entire city of Boston, my job is to amplify the voices that have continued to be unseen and unheard. On November 26, 2022, Reyna Carolina Morales Rojas, an East Boston resident, Salvadorian immigrant and mother of two, was last seen getting into a silver van in East Boston and subsequently being dropped off at Alston Street in Somerville. After multiple reports of her disappearance, the Boston Police Department publicly announced her disappearance on January 12, 2023. It took nearly two months before the Police Department publicly announced her disappearance. Unfortunately, the type of response Ms. Morales Rojas case received reflects a national pattern. Missing cases of women of color are often unmet with the same urgency as their white counterparts. In this case, Ms. Morales Rojas is not only a woman of color, but also an immigrant, which further makes her susceptible to dismissive treatment. On the 90-day mark of Ms. Morales Rojas disappearance, I was joined by several colleagues in echoing the cries for the community for more action and transparency in this case. I'd also like to thank many activists and particularly Neighbors United for Better East Boston, Latinos Unidos in Massachusetts, and Lawyers for Civil Rights of Boston for their relentless advocacy around Ms. Morales Rojas' missing case. Our office has heard them loud and clear. They do not feel safe as Latinas, women of color, and immigrants. Their fears can be summed up in all-too-common ways they have expressed. Today, it is Reyna, tomorrow, it could be any one of us. Hoy es Reyna y mañana puede ser cualquiera una de nosotros. I would like to thank many of my colleagues who joined our call to action in a letter a couple of weeks back. Today, the actions I would like us to take are twofold. I would like to, I would like to suspend the rules and ask that my colleagues vote affirmatively toward a resolution urging the City of Boston and the Boston Police Department to thoroughly investigate Ms. Morales Rojas' disappearance, commit to ensuring plans are in place for how the Boston Police Department will respond to such cases moving forward, and maximize transparency with the community. Additionally, to ensure that we are maximizing transparency, I've also filed a hearing order to audit how the Boston Police Department responds to Latino, Spanish-speaking residents in the City of Boston. It is the responsibility of the Boston City Council to ensure that all residents, including our Latino, Spanish-speaking residents, feel safe and responded by their local police departments. And the best way to do this is by offering transparency into their processes and accessibility to their services and resources in a language members of the community can understand. Forty-three percent of Latinos in Boston are foreign-born, and 25% of Latinos have limited proficiency in English and identify another language other than English as their primary language. It is important for officers who work in areas of high Latino concentration to work with the Language Communications Office to expand translation of vital documents. It is also important to remember that while the majority of Latinos are U.S. citizens, either by birth or naturalization, many remain intimidated, linked to immigration and issues of deportation. Immigrants, especially undocumented immigrants, are less likely to contact law enforcement due to heightened fears around disclosure of their immigration status and police involvement in immigration enforcement. Latinos make up 20% of the city. In fact, we have led Boston's growth since 1980 with a 256 increase in population. It is important that the community feels like we're listening to them and that we are taking their concerns seriously. I look forward to having a dialogue to further transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Would anyone like to speak on document 0518 or 0520? The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta. Counselor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and I want to thank the sponsor and lend my support of this resolution and of this hearing. I want to be sure for all of us to lend our collective love and support to friends and family of Reyna Morales Rojas and all missing women. I can only imagine what they're going through right now, and my heart is with them. I know that there are no words to provide true comfort and solace, but I hope her loved ones are as heartened as I am to see the community come together, to show solidarity and to affirm that we will stop at nothing to find her. And I want to thank members of the El Salvadorian community, particularly in East Boston, for holding all of us accountable and ensuring that we are demanding justice for Reyna. We pray that she come home safe, and if there is justice to be had, then it will be done so swiftly so that Reyna and her family can live peacefully. As councillor, I've had multiple discussions with Mayor Wu and Superintendent Cox to ensure that the lapse of the reporting and the notice does not happen again in our community. And in addition to that, it's not just Reyna that is missing, we also have another young woman in East Boston, Dana Barantos. She's an East Boston teen. She's been missing since Friday. And so, I do just want to commend again the maker and think that this is a very important discussion, and I enthusiastically call for the equal treatment of all missing women in the city and look forward to the partnership in this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, and Mr. President, thank you so much, Counselor Mejia, for filing this. This is an issue across the board when it comes to missing people or crime or any time that there is a police filing or police complaint, people of color in general are treated last or are taken care of last. And you can see that with Native American population being the very bottom of the totem pole to then blacks and Latino to follow. I imagine being, being a woman and having to, or a family member of a woman having to go to a police station and report that your family is missing. Imagine looking for them for an entire week and then a month and then months thereafter. Imagine not having any faith in the criminal justice system after that because you're ignored or you're told that they're doing everything that they can. But then, the minute you see your white counterpart on the news and something's happened, imagine that case being taken care of immediately. That is the reality that people of color face with the criminal justice system, whether, when they're being punished or convicted of a crime or when they're victims themselves, it doesn't matter. If you are black and brown, it would seem that you are born to be ignored. And that's exactly what it feels like. And then, if you're an immigrant, you're pushed even further down that totem pole. I won't belabor the point today, but I thank you for bringing this to the chamber, and I look forward to collaborating with you in whatever way that we can to support Latino women all over Boston and hopefully set precedents for other cities as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please add my name to document 0520, and it's obviously an opportunity and timely to obviously commend our Boston Police Department for the great work in collaboration with a couple of other agencies with finding that missing child last night and returning him safely home after somewhat of a horrific several hours, painstaking hours for that child's family. So, working cooperatively with the residents and reviewing a series of camera angles as well as the door cams, I believe they even flew a drone to rule out a child maybe going into the water. So, again, a collaborative effort led by our Boston Police Department, other agencies, but using technology, using technology, camera systems, drones, they were able to fortunately return, and a blessing, return this child back to his or her home. So, please add my name to 0520 and again, take this opportunity to commend the men and women of the Boston Police Department for the great work that they did last night over in East Boston. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Counselor Lara. Counselor Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I'm sorry, I didn't want to belabor the point and wanted to make very short comments, and I am just completely taken aback by our ability to take missing women, missing immigrant women, missing young women in a neighborhood and use it as an advertisement for invasive police technology. And I think it's incredibly disrespectful, and I just want to apologize on behalf of the council for the people who are here and watching us have this conversation today. I want to echo the sentiments of my council colleagues. As you all know, we sent a letter out, all of the councillors of color here on the council, really urging for the safe return. I think that waiting two months to announce that somebody is missing is unconscionable, and I am sure had a negative impact on our ability to find Ms. Morales Rojas. And so, I hope that this resolution and this hearing really brings this conversation to a head, but ultimately, it's not just the conversation, helps us really get to solutions and practices and policies inside of not only our city but in our police department that make it so that that doesn't happen to anybody else. I think that the case of the missing young woman in East Boston has proven to be heartening in the response time and how it's being handled, and so, I'm hopeful that we have learned a lesson here in this situation and that we are going to do differently and do better by immigrant women. And I say that as a daughter of an immigrant, undocumented woman who lived in this country who suffered at the hands of ultimately our systems. So, thank you, Counselor Mejia, for doing this work. Thank you to the people in East Boston who have fought so steadfastly, and to Counselor Coletta for being such a champion in this fight with us. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Counselora. Before I call on anyone else, I want to take a brief recess for two minutes. We're in recess for two minutes. We're back in session. So I just want to confirm that we were speaking on docket 0518 and 0520. We were discussing both of those dockets basically together. One was a resolution calling for equal treatment for missing women in cases of the city of Boston. The next one was in response to an audit on Boston Police Department in response to Latino-speaking residents in the city of Boston. Having said that, the chair recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It'll be brief. The previous speaker, I think, was not here or may have been confused that we were dealing with two dockets at the same time. We were talking with 0518 and 0520. That's how you were able to make the nexus between those two dockets. I stood to add my name to docket 0520, which was about a boy that went missing last night that was safely returned after work. So I think she may have been out of the chamber when, as a courtesy to the lead sponsor, you put both matters on the floor. But just for everyone's edification, those watching at home to want to know how I made the nexus or I made the leap from nothing to 0520, was live and active on the floor. It's a completely different docket number. I was addressing that docket number. So for those sitting home and saying, geez, how can Mike Flaherty go from national women's events and making sure that folks get treated fairly? It's that reason. It's because 0520 was on the floor as a courtesy to you, to the lead sponsor, which I signed on to and wanted to take an opportunity to commend the great work that they returned a child back home safely. That's how the nexus was made and then just make it up. So just want to clear the record, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. So we're going to go to docket 0518, and that's the resolution. Would anyone like to sign their name on to it? Please raise your hand. No, we'll do 0518 first. Mr. Clerk, on docket 0518, please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Bock, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Louie Jean, Councilor Murphy, Councilor Earl, please add the chair. Councilor Mihia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0518. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the docket has been adopted. On docket 0520, I'm sorry, the chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson?
Council Flynn, I just wanted to, as the oldest adult here, no, I'm kidding, as the village mother, no. So I just wanted to thank Council Flaherty for clarifying. I think that miscommunication can happen, and we're human. And my colleague, my sister in service, is not here to respond for herself. But I just wanted to say that it is an emotional topic, and confusions can happen. And it's totally human and okay for us to make mistakes. So thank you, Council Flaherty, for clarifying.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. That information was very helpful. Thank you. So docket 0520. Would anyone like to add their names on docket 0520? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Royo, Councilor Bock, Councilor Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Louie Jean, Councilor Murphy, Council Earl, please add the chair. Docket 0520 will be referred to the Committee on Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accountability. Mr. Clerk, we're going to docket 0519, please.
Docket number 0519, Councilor Mihia offered the following: Order for a hearing addressing data privacy, security, and control at City of Boston agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Mihia. Council Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to add Councilor Anderson to join me as an original co-sponsor.
Councilor Fernandez-Anderson is added. The chair recognizes Council Mihia.
Thank you. Our office has filed a hearing order to address data privacy, security, and control in City Boston agencies. Many residents are unaware of the ways in which the city agencies collect, share, and protect their personal information, their rights to control the sharing and use of their personal information. The city's ongoing efforts to improve privacy and data security practices and existing laws and procedures meant to safeguard personal information. The residents of Boston place enormous trust in city agencies to effectively protect and safeguard their personal information. Many residents must disclose their personal information to the city agencies in order to receive city services upon which they rely. Low-income people in particular are reliant upon city services and therefore tend to provide more personal information to the city than their wealthier neighbors. Data breaches, leaks, and hacks, and the misuse and abuse of personal information can and do occur in government and private industries at all levels. Increased transparency surrounding the city's current and future efforts to safeguard personal information on existing policies, procedures, training mechanisms, and laws aimed at securing personal information is necessary in order for the city council and the residents of Boston to provide meaningful accountability and oversight of the city's existing practices and procedures. And so I think what I noticed during COVID was even to get rental assistance and having grown up utilizing a lot of city services, you know, sometimes you have to give up your whole kidney just to be able to get a little bit of support here. And so I think it's important as we continue to have conversations around data and privacy that we as a city take a look at how we are holding ourselves accountable and how we are going to protect private information of our city residents. And so looking forward to having this conversation. We see this in the Boston Public Schools. We see this in BPD. There is an opportunity for us to really lean into this and do a deeper dive from an accountability and transparency perspective. So looking forward to hosting this hearing and diving in a little bit deeper to see what we can do to safeguard people's personal information. Transparency is key, and so is accountability.
Thank you, Council Mihia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the lead sponsor for adding me to this hearing order. I look forward to the conversation. I think that it's a wonderful opportunity to look at informations as we have them available of our constituents, what's confidential, what's not confidential in terms of accessing those information for us to better organize and access our constituents as well. I know that there are confidentiality issues or breaches that I've heard of for my constituents as well. But I would like to really dig deep into the data and look at how we can protect our citizens as well as look at ways that we can aggregate information so that we as counselors can have information about our constituents and better collaborate with 3-1-1 or other services in order for us to collectively support them with constituent services. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez-Anderson. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter or sign on to it? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royo, Council Bock, Council Braden, Councilor Coletta, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Louie Jean, Council Murphy, Council Earl, please add the chair. Docket 0519 will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0521, please?
Docket number 0521, Council Louie Jean and Councilor Fernandez-Anderson offered the following: Order for a study on city wages and services for the lowest-paid municipal employees.
The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean. Council Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I request to suspend Rule 12 and add Councilor Kenzie Bach as an original co-sponsor.
Hearing no objection. Council Bock has added. The chair recognizes Council Louie Jean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, you know, this is obviously, I believe yourself and Council Fernandez-Anderson, and I believe there may have been one other person, one other councillor introduced a resolution regarding municipal officers, and we all talked about how we need to look at the wages of all of our employees. And so this is part of that conversation. It's a conversation that my office has been having with folks who work in City Hall since I started here in office. And I want to give a big shout out to Joseph Scott, a custodian here, who has really been leading the effort to get us to this place where we tell the city of Boston, and we give them an order essentially to study the wages, which we know is happening right now of all employees so that we can be competitive, but to make sure that we are focusing on the lowest-paid workers. And so shout out to Joseph Scott and all of the custodians here who have been leading on this effort. On January 1st of this year, minimum wage in this state reached $15 an hour. Last month, Target announced that it would pay new employees as much as $24 an hour and extended health benefits to anyone working at least 25 hours a week. This is good news, and the city of Boston can also be an example and a beacon here when it comes to setting what we believe is fair and just for folks who are doing important work that is too often low-wage work. Here, our job started only $2.31 over minimum wage or annually $36,000. Currently, the city is hiring 20 municipal police officers at this starting salary. Building custodians don't fare much better, making just $3.82 over minimum wage or annually $39,000. And currently, the city is hiring 14 custodians. And we know that the minimum wage is not the same as the living wage. According to 2020 census, the median individual income in Boston is only $37,582 per year. However, the average for a two-bedroom rent is approximately $3,500 a month. Another reason why it's important, we just did rent stabilization. According to the Harvard Joint Center for Housing Studies, the average median Boston income required to purchase a home is $181,000, more than $181,000. After 25 years of the living wage ordinance covering municipal contractors who hold service contracts with the city, the ordinance has yet to live up to its full potential to improve the wages of our municipal employees as they are not covered. Due to the high cost of living and rising rate of inflation, we must prioritize our lowest-paid workers so they don't feel left behind and so that we affirm their status as valued municipal employees. We can thank people as much as they want. We can prevent citations and resolutions, but if we're not showing that appreciation in their paychecks, it's all for nothing and symbolic. And I wasn't hired for symbolism, and I know many of us weren't either. Historically, working for the city of Boston as a security officer, clerk, as an administrative staff or custodian has long been a pathway for steady and stable income and employment. It's time for the city of Boston to conduct a comprehensive study of wages and benefits that ensure we're hiring not only competitively but also leading the way on the living wage. And so I also want to shout out to folks here in the city of Boston, again, who are already doing this work. We just want to make sure that we say as a city council that we want the work to focus on the low, to start with, the lowest-paid employees among us and see what we can do to increase that, to think about, I know, ideas that have already been floated around in previous years. Study the creation of a municipal minimum wage so that we can continue to set the example. And, you know, I know Council Bock, via looking at our contract to city employees, does a lot of work in this space, and there have been some wins. But the wins are still not getting our workers, who we value, to a space where we can say, all right, we feel comfortable with what you're making and require you to live in this very expensive city. And so we got to do the work to get us there so that we can look people in the eye and know that we're doing work for them. So that's what this is about. I want to thank my co-sponsors, who we've had a number of conversations about this. I want to thank them for their work and diligence with moving this work forward and thinking about what else we can do regarding ordinances, again, the municipal minimum wage. And I look forward to partnering with the administration, who's also very excited to have this conversation and knows the value of paying our workers, especially our lowest-paid workers, a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Louie Jean. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Council Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the lead sponsor and my co-sponsor, Council Bock. If I was to approach this, I would have just said, let's file an ordinance. But my colleagues, I think, understand that there is a level of conversation, I guess, and study. The study part, I don't necessarily think that we don't know what exactly people should be getting paid, but rather just for clarification, that with pensions and contracts or negotiations, that deserves a conversation for us to properly understand what would make sense and what would be fiscally responsible at this time. And I would say that, you know, to my colleague's point in terms of, you know, not just acknowledging people by way of symbolism, that it's more than just, you know, like, it's more than just, you know, studying and saying, you know, you deserve to get paid this. Uber and a whole bunch of other companies, people can do Grubhub and other side jobs. You can work at other types of jobs and make more money than working in the city, than cleaning the city. The city, every time we have conversations with the Office of Budget Management, the response is that the city is so rich that we are able to pay our bonds back in less than the actual life of the loan, that we are so filthy-rich that we're able to do a lot of things. And yet, we say that, then we say, okay, we have to respect our employees and our people. But we don't. Because if you care about me, you respect me. If you respect me, you pay me because you know that I have to feed my children. You know that I have to take care of my bills. You know that I have to live in this city. So I would say to everyone who is listening or who will be listening, for people in parks, people in all departments, all the black and brown people who are being hired at lower jobs and who get paid the very least in the city of Boston. We're trying to set precedence for a new way of doing business. It's not okay that you get paid low. It's not okay that we in Boston only hire or the majority of people in lower-paying wages are black and brown, and the majority of people in upper management are white. We want white people to have jobs. We want white people to stay. We just want to make space to share the power, to spread it so that we can equitably treat everyone in the way that people deserve. And so the response is always, we can't find enough people, enough applicants, or enough people that are qualified for these jobs. people that are qualified for these jobs, but it's just simply not true. We're just not doing a good job in actually reaching out to those applicants. We're not doing a good job in creating pathways for workforce development in order to employ. Tokenism is not enough. Crumbs is not enough. And you cannot continue to tokenize black and brown people and say, this is the most diverse this, or the most diverse that. Who cares if you don't pay them well enough? Who cares if they are not in the decision-making power seats to lead the city, to be able to change the city in an equitable way? So this is beyond important, and I know my colleagues are smiling because they know that when it comes to Counsel Tania Fernando Zanderson, and I said to Bach, don't call me Fernandez because it's not Fernandez, so I just messed up there, but it is Fernandez. But the point is, is that when it comes to tea moneybags, y'all know that I am very serious on equity. If anything, it's so consistent, you guys are tired of it. But please don't get tired of it. Be patient, okay? It's only, I've only begun, all right? And if I'm here next year, God willing, I'm only getting warmed up. We have to change this, and we have to treat everybody with respect, and we have to pay people so that they feel proud to work for the city. And beyond that, then we have to figure out how we're going to dismantle systemic racism so that we are also ensuring that outside agencies, that the city in general, is being equitable and treating everyone the way that they deserve to be treated. So I thank you in this conversation and for the white people that always hear me talking. I absolutely love people and love everybody. I don't know why I have to explain this, because it's ridiculous. It's an oxymoron. I'm a black woman who's been completely oppressed in the system that is against me. So of course I love you. Of course I make space for you. But hear me out. Be patient. Just don't be afraid that we are trying to take your seat or that the immigrant population is taking your seat. We can love each other and make space, and we can make sure that this city is a more equitable city. It's time for us to evolve as human beings, and that is the direction we're going. If you are not in agreement, then get out of the way so we can do our job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernando Zanderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Bar. Counsel Bar, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you to Counsel Louie Jean and Counsel Fernando Zanderson for allowing me to join on this. As was mentioned, obviously, we get the collective bargaining agreements through my committee, and in that context, we often have these conversations specifically about our lowest-paid workers in the city. But I think that the council's been really clear about our desire to see systemically the city adopt a policy of trying to raise the wages of these lowest-paid workers. And one way of doing that is like with the hearing order that Counsel Anderson filed around municipal police officers picking off some of these specifics. But I think what's really encouraging about this study approach and why I'm proud to co-sponsor it is basically to say, yes, the actual wages for our workers here in the city are going to have to be changed in the collective bargaining agreement, unit by unit, because that's the collective bargaining law in this state. But if we know what we're targeting, if there's been a clear bird's-eye view, look at the city's, like, the wage profile of all of our workers, and we say, hey, we just don't want anyone in the city of Boston making less than this amount, and it's really impossible to find residency in the city if you're not making that amount, right, which is something the council's talked about extensively, that there's a clear policy preference set for, like, we want to have all of our CBAs eliminate wages that are below this floor. And I think, like, in a lot of ways, you know, we've taken a similar approach when we've talked about policy changes that have to happen, that are impacted by collective bargaining in other areas. The council doesn't get to negotiate the table, but the council does get to be part of this conversation about what's our overarching goal. And I think if we have that, then every collective bargaining agreement can be a piece of that puzzle, and we can get to a place where we're actually seeing the kind of change that we want. So I think that getting that bird's-eye view, the administration has said that this is a priority of theirs. I think the council just needs to be in that conversation, and we need to have all of our low-wage workers in the city be encouraged and know that we really are working on it and fighting for them, and that things are going to change through the upcoming collective bargaining processes. So I'm really excited about this. I think a report is long overdue, and I have a lot of confidence in Alex Lawrence, our chief of people for the city, in being able to do something like this. So looking forward to the conversation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bar. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mehea. Counsel Mehea, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to the makers for bringing this forth. You know, one of the things that our office did a few years ago was work in collaboration with municipal employees, and we passed the Fair Chance Act. And although that was really focusing on promotion and opportunities for black and brown people to rise up in the ranks of being able to, you know, get paid as they increase in their titles, I think that there's an amazing opportunity for us to really continue to support this work. And I also think that, you know, last year, our office filed the hearing order around low-wage workers and workforce development housing. And I think all of these things, even then, when we filed it, it was really brought up that, you know, we can, we could do everything that we can, but if we're not really addressing the issues of wages, then we're just having a mute conversation. So I'm really looking forward to having this conversation and supporting whatever it takes to ensure our municipal employees are compensated in a way that they can actually stay here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mehea. Would anyone like to sign their name? Please raise your hand. I would also like to speak briefly on this. We have the most diverse union in the city, which is the municipal police offices that work here and in several other city buildings, and they're barely making it. The most diverse workforce, they're practically saving lives every day, as we saw yesterday, saving an elderly gentleman's life. And they're here protecting us and protecting city workers and doing tremendous job. They also deserve a fair wage and to be treated with respect. And that's something that this body has been engaged in, believes in, in these municipal police offices. They do a tremendous job. Please raise your hand if you'd like to sign on. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Royal, Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Mehea, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Weirall, please add the Chair. This document, 0521, will be referred to the Committee on City Services, Innovation Technology. We're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0522, please.
Document number 0522. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Mehea.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 0522. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0523.
Document number 0523. Counsel Flynn for Counsel Baker.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 0523. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0524.
Document number 0524. Counsel Flynn offer the following order for appointment of temporary employees.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of document 0524. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read document 0525, please.
Document number 0525. Counsel Flynn offer the following order for appointment of temporary employees.
The Chair seeks suspension of rules and passage of document 0525. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. We're on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there is one late-file matter, which is a personnel order. The late-file matter should be on everyone's desk. Let me take a few seconds just to confirm it. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this late-file matter into the record, please?
Personnel order of Counsel Flynn for Counsel Fernando Zanderson.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of this late-file matter. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The document has passed. We're on to green sheets. We're on to the consent agenda. Okay. We are now moving to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are three additional additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for the adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Memorials. At this time, I do want to give my colleagues an opportunity to speak about a loved one, a constituent, a family member, a neighbor, someone they may not, someone they know that they want to offer a prayer or a kind word during this period of time. But before we do that, let us also remember, on behalf of Counsel Braden, Judy Human, and on behalf of the entire city council body, Congressman Brian Donnelly of Dorchester. A moment of silence, please. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand today to honor the life and work of Judy Human, who passed away this past week. She was an internationally recognized disability activist and advocate and a leader of the disability rights movement. She contracted polio at the age of 18 months and was barred from kindergarten because she used a wheelchair in New York. And she led a one-woman battle to be allowed to work as a teacher in New York City and successfully sued to be allowed to teach in Boston Public, not Boston Public Schools, New York Public Schools as a kindergarten teacher. She was being barred because she was a wheelchair user. In 1977, it had been four years since President Nixon had signed the Rehabilitation Act, and one section, 504, was supposed to outlaw discrimination against disabled people in any institution receiving federal funds, those in preschools, elementary schools, high schools, hospitals, universities, and in government. The Carter administration was dragged, and the Secretary for Health and Human Services at the time was dragging their feet. And there was, this resulted in nationwide protests and sit-ins, and one in particular was in San Francisco where Judy Human led disability rights activists in a one-month-long sit-in in a federal building. The federal government didn't take too kindly to that. They cut off the water, they cut off the electricity, and they cut off the telephones. That's a challenge for folks in wheelchairs and people on ventilators, et cetera. There were very severely disabled folks in this protest. They were able to communicate through American Sign Language to the outside world, and they had the support of unions and the LGBT community and the Black Panthers, enabled them to sustain that activity, that protest for one month. And their actions, and under Judy's leadership, were the foundation for what we call the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. So I, it was, someone said that Judy Human changed the world. I think she did. And we're very thankful for her work and her activism and give thanks for her life today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Zanderson. Counsel Fernando Zanderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This week, since Friday, my family is mourning, and the life of my aunt, I guess, by way of marriage, my uncle's wife, who took away her life. And it's an incredible story, and everyone is still in disbelief. My cousin, one of my cousins were home, were home when this took place, and in the way that it took place, too, everyone is incredibly just taken aback. I wanted to ask everyone to pray for her. Some people believe that when you take away your life, that you, that God doesn't forgive you or your soul, but I seem to, I feel, I believe different. I think that only God knows what is within our hearts, and your relationship with God is personal and it's private, and only God can judge her. And I believe that God has forgiven her. So for Tasha Johnson. Everyone has, you know, beautiful words to say after people pass, but I have to say that she was truly a kind heart, and I just, I will always continue to pray for you, Tasha, I guess in that spirit, just, you know, all the things that we say to each other, that every moment counts, that God weighs even an atom's weight of your behavior, of your actions, that we take moments and be intentional with them, and how we treat people or each other. And I know that I tend to be a tough cookie, and I ask you for your forgiveness. Ramadan is around the corner, so it's the example, the month of the example of how to behave and how to expiate your sins and to focus. I ask all of you to forgive me for, if I've offended you, and I ask you to keep Tasha Johnson in your heart for today and ask that God forgives her, all of her sins, and accepts all of her good deeds, and takes her into the highest heaven. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernando Zanderson. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of you and I and the entire council, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Paul O'Leary and Thomas Ne, both of South Boston, two great families with great children and spouses that are mourning their loss. And if you wouldn't mind, through the chair, if I could shift gears to an announcement, if you will?
Yes, go ahead.
And that announcement is great news, of course. Sister Evelyn Hurley, who has given many an inspirational invocation right here at the chamber, she's my first-grade nun, and her dad actually served in the Boston City Council and was the president of the council from 1949 to 1955. She turned 108 yesterday. So happy birthday to Sister Evelyn Hurley. And I got a chance to speak to her at 8:30 in the morning, and they had a celebratory mass for her. So you talk about just a selfless woman for others, particularly as a sister, the work that she's done, the number of individuals and families that she's educated and played an instrumental role, obviously mine and my family included. Truly amazing that she's 108 years old. Shop is attacked, had a great conversation, was asking about your mom and dad and other folks in the neighborhood. So she's at the motherhouse, sisters to charity in Nazareth in Kentucky, and obviously, her home and her heart remain in South Boston, as she's done so much for so many people. But I'd be remiss if we did not recognize her birthday. And we also proclaimed it her day in the city of Boston yesterday. So I told her, no parking tickets, no increases in any fees and fines or taxes. So she appreciated that. But during the course of the mass, she said a prayer for the Boston City Council, just a truly amazing woman. So happy birthday to Sister Evelyn and many, many more. She's now 108 in one day, and I'm looking forward to celebrating her 109th birthday with her. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. And as I mentioned, Congressman Brian Donnelly was a state representative, he was also a Boston public school teacher, he was a youth basketball coach in Dorchester, large family in Dorchester and the Cape Cod as well. He was known in Congress for his support of immigrants, immigrant rights, and immigrant rights for the Irish community as well. So our thoughts and prayers are with Brian Donnelly's family. The Chair moves that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of those we mentioned. And we are now scheduled to meet again in this chamber, the Ayinella Chamber, on Wednesday, March 15th, at 12:00 noon. And before we adjourn, I want to say thank you to the clerk. I want to say thank you to the clerk's staff. I want to say thank you to the stenographer. I want to say thank you to my city council colleagues and your staff, and the city council central staff as well. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned.